Start with the um midterm that I have here, which I lost all of a sudden. Here, I have this picture and it actually kind of starts with a good question honestly, so uh let's try it out. The the quality of oh I already took a screenshot but the quality of the screen the pictures are pretty bad but there we go. Um so file named the that contains twenty integers, no duplicates, all the numbers are different. Write a complete C program that prints out the two smallest numbers. Okay. Um so. Okay. So we'll start with this, of course, we don't have to have this this bit here. And I'll just say return uh return zero. So it's gonna okay first of all um I have to say I have to open the file, so to open the file, if I remember, I say percent in. In equals F open. And file name which was numbers, I'll just say numbers dot T X T. Because I wanna try it with a T X T file, but it'll be the same, it'll be the same. And I wanna open it in read mode. Um so then I'll do a for loop. Probably, oh I also need two variables here, I need a I'll say um is it integers, yeah int. Smallest, no I'll say ints small one, not small one. Small two, so the smallest one is small one. The next smallest one is small two. Um I I feel like I should initialize it to zero, I don't really know why, but probably don't actually have to, but it's fine. So for um uh A equals zero. Or A equals one, I guess. A is less than twenty. A plus plus. For each of the so for each of the numbers uh we're gonna do F scan F. I'm gonna take in a a um. Number D. Uh integer, which is gonna be f- do I just say in? Amper sand in? Think that might be right. I think that's right, I don't I don't know. So um what I'm thinking is that I would say is it smaller than uh no, I have to initialize hmm. No, I know what you mean, I know what you mean, yeah yeah, okay, so let's let's do that then, or you know what, I how about this, how about this? I I take the first two values and assign it to small one and small two. Right, so. Yeah. So I'll say um uh no, I'll have to do it after I open it. So I'll say F scan F. I'll take a integer from in. And assign that to small one. And then small two is gonna get F scan F. Is gonna get an integer. It's gonna get an integer from in and then we're just gonna compare them here quickly, I'll just say if. If um. If small. One is greater than small two. Then sma- oh okay, uh I'll say I have to declare another temp. I don't know that it's in the right order though, I don't know if the first two numbers are. I don't know if this I don't know if like what if I get the first number is five and the second number is three, then it would be. Right, well we just need the two smallest numbers, so if the first two could be, so I need to check first if if the first one's small and then. If that's true. If small one is bigger than small two, then first of all, I wanna assign. Small one equals temp. Small one equals small two, small two equals temp. Okay, that switches the position of of them. So now we know, we have two numbers, there's eighteen more to go. There's eighteen more to go. Um and we're gonna check eighteen times if the number we just took in is. Oh, just if it's smaller than small one or small two, so if if the number we just took in, which I didn't name, so I'll call it in. Or input. So input equals. If input is smaller than. Um. Well, let's okay, I'll do there might be a simpler way to do it, but I'll say if input is smaller than uh num uh so I fell small one. Um or. Input is, oh sorry, no, input is smaller than I meant to say. It's smaller than that or smaller than small two, actually this is redundant, I can just I can just say that. So there you go, if input is smaller than small two, then do something else, well no else, just just skip the code. Okay, so what do I do if the input we just got is smaller than the smallest two numbers we we know so far? If it is, then we have to ask, is it smaller, whi- which one's the smaller then? Right, is inputs smaller than uh small one, so start with small two, is input smaller than small two? Um. Yeah, no, no, hold on, we don't need to do that. No, no, I can just say is, we already know it's smaller than small small two, so we can just have to ask, well, is it, okay, it's smaller than small two, but is it smaller than? Small one? I'm sorry, input less than small one, if it is, then say small one equals input. If it's not, we know that it's smaller than small two though, so we can say small two equals input. And at the end of all of it, we print F. Pres- uh the two smallest numbers are. Percent D and percent D, I'll put a new line at the start. Close and then I'd say uh F close, what it was the what's the closing thing, F close? In, I don't remember what the closing thing is. Yeah? Okay, let me save this. Let me save this, I'll save it in. I'll like a new folder here, I'll say study hall, not really a hall, but there you go. So I'll save it there and then I'm going to create a folder. Just a text file, I guess. Um and I was supposed to call it numbers. And I just separated with enter, with the enter key, I guess, so I'll say. Okay, five, eight, eighty-nine, thirty-four, two-six, seven, one, zero, duh, duh, how many numbers was I supposed to add? One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Well, it's gonna be hard to say numbers and count at the same time, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Uh let's let's try it out and see, what should what should the answer be, zero and one, right? Zero and one should be the answer, so let's execute it, but compile, okay, didn't like it, so what did it not like? I did not pers ampersands here. Okay, compile, still didn't like it, what did I not like? Percent D expects a matching int argument. In. Uh I'm doing something wrong with my F scan F here, what am I doing wrong, let me see. Is this it? Yeah, 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 F scan F is file percent variable. So F scan F is. The file, which is in, percent, and what variable does it assign it to, which is small one. So it's in. I'm assigning it to small two. Uh so here. It's in and I'm ascending assigning it to input. Okay, still still didn't like it. Um because I. What? Oh, and I cause I didn't assign the small one, small two. Okay, didn't like it, A is undeclared, have to say int A. Okay, in is undeclared, did you mean int, no, I did not. Um how do I declare it, let's look at my file here, data equals F open. In equals. F open. Uh there's no semicolon. Temp may be uninitialized, yep, temp is, wait, no, temp is initialized. Oh, it did. Uh but what's the warning, in function main, temp main may be used uninitia- oh, it just may be used uninitialized in this file, no, but it's initialized right there. Oh, uh there, there. Okay, build, execute, zero and four, okay, that's not good. Okay. Let's take a look. So. Zero and is the next smallest number? Okay, let's try, let's let's go through it, let's see what's happening. It's taking in, okay, the first thing it opens is the file, okay, then it takes in the first two numbers, so the first two numbers, it's getting a five and an eight. It's asking um is this one, is the first one. Bigger than the second one, if that's true, then uh switch them, if that's not true, leave them, so it should be leaving them, so small one is still five and small two is still eight. So now for int A equals one to eighteen. Uh you know what, just to see that it's doing everything, let's say, let me just say print uh print F. Yeah, I'm just gonna say uh I'll say checking. Percent D. Input and I'll maybe I'll put a new line at the start of it, let's see if, let's see what happens, does it go through, and I'll say checking. Uh and I and I'll do um. In brackets, I'll say percent, oh, does it not like brackets, it doesn't like brackets, if I do. That, does it like brackets, no, it does not like brackets, um. Percent A. Or no, percent D. A. So, so yeah, it does seventeen checks, it doesn't do the eighteenth checks because I uh. No, I want it to be equal to as well. So there, so it does eighteen checks, what happens if I try to make get it to do nineteen checks, let's see. It does nineteen checks, oh, it just does sixty-seven twice? It just can't get anymore, okay. So it'll do, I want it to do the eighteen checks. So it's checking, uh let's see what if it's checking everything in the in the right order, so. Yeah, eighty-nine to sixty-seven, so it's checking everything, I mean, it wouldn't change the order, of course, but yeah, so then let's see, um let me put a printf in here. And I'll say decide to, I'll just say switch. So if it's it it'll it'll tell us it switches if it switches. Yeah, so it it doesn't switch. Let's see what happens if I were to say eight then five. Yeah, so it does decide to switch, right, so that's good, but I'll leave it a fo- I'll leave it at five then eight, so less complication. Okay, so it does switch them properly, now, for each one. We're checking some number. If the number we just checked is smaller than. Or equal to? No, we don't care if it's equal to, we don't care if it's equal to, just we just care if it's smaller than, so if it is smaller, let's just say here, print. Print F. Slash N. Input. Is a new smallest. Uh in fact, I'll say input. Percent. Or input number percent A. Which is, which equals percent D is a new smallest. I'll say A input. See what happens if it does what we think, so. Oh yeah, that's supposed to be D, cause I'm, the variable is A, so. Yeah, so so it's uh why does it not check number three? Wait, what? Wait, it doesn't, wait, what is it checking? What, it just, oh no, I scrolled down a little bit, that's all it is, okay, I scrolled down a little bit and then I got confused, so it checks eighty-nine, nope, not smaller. This one, not smaller, not smaller, seven. Is not smaller, oh, it's smaller than eight, okay, it's smaller than eight. So. Um so it does go into here and let's see, uh I'll say um new sm- oh. Print F. New smallest is percent D input, or no, um input, yeah. Do what, sorry? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then um and I'll say printf. New line, new second smallest is percent D input, should be everything. So. Oh, but it's. No, wait, 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 that doesn't make sense, new smallest is one. So then, oh, no, 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 if, okay, there's a more complicated check we have to do here, so if it's smaller than small one, yeah, it has to be. Yeah, yeah. Else if it's. It's bigger than. This is where the problem is, we have to do a more complicated check on that second number, so what's happening, it the the. It's coming in. It's checking, it's checking, it's checking, okay, seven is smaller than eight, so the new second smallest is seven, but it's not smaller than uh five, so it's not the smallest. One is smaller than five, so one is the new smallest, okay, checking zero, which is a sixth entry, sixth entry is the new smallest. But one should then become this one, not whatever. Uh s- is small one. That's the problem. Zero and zero, okay. Um so, not what we actually want. Not what we actually want, no. So we want. Yeah, yeah, I see what's happening. New smallest is seven. So we wanna add, let me do this like this so I can see the output too. So we need to ask, is this new second smallest? Smaller than. Let me think about this for a second. It's going here, where where's the part that isn't working? One is smaller than five, so fi- one is the new smallest, zero is smaller than six, so zero is the new smallest, but the second smallest. Is four, wait, why is it zero and zero then? Oh, no, no, because I said small is small, yeah, yeah. So small. No, that that that's wrong, hold on, this this that should be, that shouldn't be that. So. This at least, I think, is closer, zero and four, our problem is. Is that. Yeah, our problem is, is that when it assigns. One to be the new small, no, when it assigns zero to be the new smallest, it should assign one to be, so it should assign. Small one e- small two equals small one. And then do. Okay, there we go, that worked. Yeah, I can't get it, the output. Okay, good, so it should bump small one onto small two and then i- assign small one to the new smallest input. Let's just try with another random set of numbers. Um I guess I'll make the two smallest. I don't know, what's another random set, okay, just uh. Just say numbers to me, someone say, you know, seven, six, twenty-five, nine, sixty-five, seventy-two, fifty-six. These are all, they don't matter, because the answer is gonna be, I make it zero, one. Two, three. The, okay, I didn't count how many, you didn't put too many, yeah. I didn't put a zero, oh yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So I kind of actually want these, so I'm gonna just get rid of a couple of these. And I don't remember how many I took, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And let's run it and whoops, don't want colors. Still zero and one, did I not save it, I hope I saved it, no, I did save it. Oh, is it just the answer just zero and one again? Probably. Uh yes, get rid of that one and make it a fifty. Um there, execute, zero and two, okay, good, we're good. Okay, so it worked, that was kind of a tricky question, but I'll um I will. Yeah. I'll uh I'll copy and paste this here and then, you know, you can have it there, is there any questions about this code? Yeah, so that, what what I'm doing there is I need some variable, so okay, what I wanna do is I have some number in position one and position two. Right now, right, here, I'll do it like this. Okay, so. Let's say small one right now is holding the number eight and small two is holding the number five, is this a small one? Small one. And this is small two. So what I wanna do is I wanna switch the positions, right, I wanna switch the positions, so to do that, I say, I say. Whatever's in small one, put that in this other thing called temp, right, this is temp, so put eight in there, well, it's blank to begin with, but put eight in there. Right, then um whatever was in, so this is step one. Step two is. Is put whatever's in small um two and put it in small one. And the third step is to put whatever's in temp and put it in small two. That's the third step. So does that make sense? That's how I'm switching the positions there, I can't just say small one equals small two, small two equals small one, small two, small two equals small one. Because if I say small, small one equals small two. Sure, that will work, small one will become eight and but then when I say small, small two. Equals small one. It'll also get a five, they'll just both be five, because now small two is small one, but small one now is a five, so it's gonna say. Put five in there, put five in there, they're just both gonna be five. Does that make sense? Y- yeah, in in math terms, they would just mean small one equals small two and you're just like switching the positions. But with, you have to be a little bit more explicit here, uh is is this comment, what's commenting, yeah, that's comment. So this is switching the positions of small one and small two. What are you thinking, are are you thinking there could be, there must be an easier way? Yeah, right. Yeah. Let's let's take an example here, let's say, let's say I have um, let me open another document quickly. Right, so let's say I have. Uh whatever, small one, keep calling them this because whatever, we know it from before, so I'll say int small one equals uh four. Small two equals seven. Shall I switch the positions just for now, just to show, and let's just say I wanna switch the positions of these numbers, right, so right now, if I print, if I print F. Print F, uh the two numbers. Numbers are percent D and percent D, just small one and small two. Okay. And this is, just to be clear, this is, I can't use brackets like that, can I, I'll just say this is before. Okay, and if I say small one equals small two, let's just say I, let's just say I do this and. Let's just leave like this for now, let's see what happens, if I print the same thing. But this is after. Right, if I compile, 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 uh study hall. Example. Uh returns zero, yeah. So you see, sorry. So before, the numbers are seven and four, which is what we expect, right, seven and four, and then afterwards, it's four and four. So that's not what we wanted. Because what's happening is they're saying, okay, it's small one, we're saying what what should small one be now, it should be what small two is. Right, we're not even changing small two at all, let's say I went to change small two and I say small two equals small one. And I do the same thing, I'm gonna get the same output. Because what's happening is that small one is becoming what small two is, so small two was, you know what, let's write it like this. I'll write it in a commented out section here. There, that didn't fix it? So what's happening, okay, so initially, we're saying, okay, what should be in small one, so small one should, we're gonna assign that now to the number four. Right, and now we're saying that what should be in small two, small two should be whatever small one is now. The small one is now four. So my output at the end is just four and four. Does that make sense? Four and four, right, so I have to do something more complicated than this, what I what I do is I say um put whatever's in small. Put what uh declare a temp. Declare a temp. Declare a temp. Yeah. Which is an integer. Put whatever's in small one, put that in a temp variable. Okay, so now, um, oh, sorry, no, no, no. That's what I'm saying. So whatever's in small one, put it in a temp variable. Okay, so we're saying that the, I'm gonna delete this now. So we know that temp now is whatever small one was. Well, that's seven, so temp is seven. Okay, then on the next line, I wanna assign small one to be now small two, and I want small two to be temp. So, temp is seven, that's what we're saying in the first. Then we're saying that small one should be whatever small two is. But small two is just four. Right? And then finally, small two should be whatever temp is, but temp is just seven. Because temp is seven, we say that at the start. So I can execute it, and the numbers will flip around. Uh, yes, if you had this underneath here, whoops, had this underneath there instead, what's gonna happen is that um, whatever's in, yeah, it would, well, if you see it, but yes, it it would do that, it would print four and four. Right, because first we're saying small one should be what small two is, so now small one is four, small two is also four. So they're both four at this point, so whatever happens after, they're just both four. Does that make sense? Okay. Good. Um, okay, there's that question. So let's take a look at the next one. Um, I don't know if, let's try it and see what happens. Uh, another C file. So our next question is this. So, Gospers formula is used to calculate an approximation for the factorial of a number, so that. Uh, write a complete C program that prompts the user to enter a po- enter a positive integer n. You must write an input validation loop to require a positive value, use Gospers pro- a formula to approximate n factorial, and then display the results with three decimal places of precision. Okay, note that the values of e and pi are predefined in math.h as constant macros m dot m under, uh, m underscore e and m underscore pi. So, uh, I'm gonna include include uh, math.h. I'm gonna include math.h. Yeah, seems right to me. So first of all, uh, the user's gonna have to input something, and he's gonna have to in, he or she's gonna have to input a um, integer number. So I'm gonna have to declare something for that. Right, so scanf. Uh, I'm gonna take in an integer, and I'm gonna assign that to input. And I'm gonna just start off the scanf with a prompt, which is, please in- input a number. Um, and uh, new line. Okay, so it's gonna prompt the user for a number. Now, I'm gonna have to do this to it now though, right? So I'm gonna have to have another output here, and I'm gonna say, yeah, double double answer. Right? So, the answer's gonna be a double, right, because this is like with an exponential function, and it's a other, the square root and stuff going on in there, and pi, so the answer's not gonna be an integer. So although, why would the answer not be an integer? We're putting in an integer, the factorial of an integer is an is an integer. I guess the point, well, the okay, let's just go with it. I think it should be okay. Uh, this is right. Uh, we're not really making a mistake, it just seems like since the since the user can only enter a positive integer, it seems kind of useless. Uh, you could just do a different formula for it. The the point of a formula like that is that you can do like the factorial of like a half. What's the factorial of a half? You can't really do that nicely with integers, so you use a fancy formula like that or something. Um, but I guess you're not supposed to do that for here. So, okay, we're gonna use this number, and I think I can just say answer equals, and it's just gonna be a complicated thing. So what do we want the order to be? Well, first of all, it's something, something times something times something. Right? That last something is a square root function. What's inside the square root function? Something times m underscore pi. Okay, what's that something? Two times um, input plus uh, one point oh over three point oh, or just one point oh over three, whatever. So I have to say one point oh here though, because um, if I didn't, this express, this would result in an inter, in, if if I just did this, this would be effectively adding zero. Because it's an integer divided by an integer. Um, since this is an integer expression, that would round down to zero. So I want this to be a mixed expression, so it's a or or just a fully double, doesn't really matter. So it's gonna be a double divided by an integer, it's gonna result in a double. So it's gonna actually give me zero point three three three, repeating to some accuracy. Okay, that's everything in there. What's in here? Well, it's gonna be e, no, it's gonna be, uh, I don't know how to use the power function. Is it um, m underscore e and then the power I want it to? B? Um. Yeah. So it's going to be, uh, negative one times uh, hopefully that won't get confused. Negative one times way too many brackets. Uh. Oh my god. Yeah. So that's negative one times input. And here is going to be, uh, I don't know if I'm using the power function right here, so it's just gonna be input, input. And a semicolon. And printf, uh, no, yeah, printf. Percent LF. Answer. Uh, question three? I don't remember what it Oh yeah, sorry. There you go. Uh, answer is set but not used? Use it here? What? What do you mean I don't use it? Oh, no, I just missed a some sort of semicolon somewhere. No, I didn't miss a semicolon. Expected a bracket, yes, I just missed my amount of brackets. So okay, this guy's good. This one's missing a bracket, so it should be, that's for that, that's for that. Uh, so I need to what was that for? That's for that. I just need to add another bracket here. There you go. So, well, what's three factorial? Okay, almost six, it's good. Uh, give me an, it gave me an output, uh, and I'll I'll put this just in a loop, just so we can keep trying numbers. Um, new answer is and I'll just put this, um I'll say pr- um, no, I'll say, um, while one should work. Um, there. So, uh, six. Uh, well, I don't actually know what six factorial is, so I'll have to live with that. It's two numbers that I do know, I guess, so four factorial is six times four, twenty-four? Yeah, twenty-four. I don't know why my thing is spaced out like that. Uh, the two factorial is two, one factorial is one. Uh, five factorial is hundred twenty, I'm pretty sure that's right. Yep, that looks approximately right. See what happens if I put in like thirty factorial. So, uh, yeah, so the only, the last thing we need is that we need to put this with three decimal places of precision. So I'm pretty sure we just put three decimal places, so dot three? Six? Yeah, there we go. If I put thirty again, it'll just give me three decimal places of precision. Okay? Yeah, this, this isn't really part of the question. This is just so that I could keep testing numbers over and over again. Remember, wh- while loop is just asking, while loop is just asking, uh, while this statement is true. So for as long as one means true, run this. But one always means true, so it'll just always loop. Again. It wouldn't run it. Yep. Wouldn't run at all. So that's just like a trick to make code run infinitely, as much as you want. Just say while one, or while any, any positive number would work. I, in fact, maybe would a negative number work? While negative one? Yeah, while negative, anything except zero would work. Zero means false. Yeah, no problem. So again, to anybody confused, that's not part of the question, that's just for me to be able to test things over and over again, so I'll actually remove that. And there's that. You're right. Yep. Uh, so, please input um uh, I'll just put this in an if statement. So I'll say um and and the if, tab it over. Why is everything tabbed over? Oh, because of that. Um, so if the input that we just got is greater than zero, then go ahead, do it, do whatever the the code is that we wanna do. Otherwise, it's not greater than zero. Just prompt the user again. Or, um um uh, yeah, hold on. Oh yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. I do not know. Clear screen, C L R S C R N, or something like that, C, C up, it is something like that, I remember actually seeing in the code. Let's just say uh clear screen and see. C L R S C R. C L R S C R, that, but it's not showing up as a function, or maybe it is, I'm just, yeah. Yeah. That's what it says here. I just looked it up, so. Yeah, C L R S C R as a function. So, yeah, we're gonna do a do while loop here, not an if statement, because I realize, yes, that's not smart. So um, what do while is gonna do is it's it's going to run the code once, and repeat while um, while input is less than zero. So for as long as input is a negative number, or or equal to zero, no. Uh, do we have to account for the fact that zero factorial? Yeah. Oh, will it actually get the right number? Uh, execute, so please input a number, what's it, negative five? Oh, no, still doesn't. Uh, input, repeat while input is less than zero. Uh, compile, build, execute. Negative four. Nope, still doesn't. Do, I know tab doesn't matter, but I'm still gonna tab it over. Repeat while input say greater than zero, see what happens. So what if I say negative five now? Nope, still does it. And what if I say five? Nope, it just doesn't. So it is running the code. The question's asking, is while this is true is input well, we want that to be less, we had it less of four, so we want it to be less than zero. Input is an integer. Zero is an integer, it's fine. If it's less than zero, run the code again if this is true. Hmm. Yeah. Oh, no, 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 it says compilation failed, so that's fine. Okay, we're good. So on the bottom here, compilation failed. Um, cannot open output file, permission denied. Uh, why? What, why is that the case? Is it 'cause it's open? Yeah, it's 'cause I still have the command prompt open. So now if I say negative five, yes, negative three, zero, approximately one factorial. And if I execute it again, and I put five factorial, it'll still give me the right answer. Good. So this did work. So there's my answer. Yeah, so the yes well, actually, no, it it does actually say enter a positive integer, so no, zero shouldn't count. Even though zero factorial is one, it it it's saying yeah, yeah. It should, so I should put zero in, it should yeah, so this is asking, when should I repeat? This is asking, when should I repeat the question? So I should repeat the question if the input is less than or equal to zero. Otherwise, leave. Go on to the actual answer. Okey dokey. Uh, that's the whole midterm. Wow, okay, that's the it was only two questions on this twenty fifteen winter midterm. I guess they had to write two whole. Oh no, this is end of programming section. Do not forget the multiple choice. Yeah. Uh, yeah, probably. Yeah. That would be a problem. Yeah. Yeah, no, I've heard that from a few people, yeah. Okay, so um, there are, Ryerson. Uh I don't have the textbook. I couldn't find it for free online, so I'm not getting it. I'm okay. Not gonna do that, if I don't have to. Uh, okay, let's try this one, I guess. I have some other midterms though. Not all of them, I just clicked them. I just, I just looked at them. Didn't do do them all, yeah. Yeah, yeah, just hi, everyone, how's it going? Yeah, yeah. I like that, very good. Um, so I can keep doing them, I prob- probably best to look at the midterms, although this looks like a fine question. I think, yeah. Although they're all coding questions, like they're all to do the code. Yeah, you still, you still need to know. Functions, yeah, functions are gonna be on the midterm. Functions, yeah, functions are gonna be on the midterm. Yeah. Yes, I agree. I agree. But we'll see. So yeah, so we're we're doing everything up until, although are we doing the binary stuff as well? Right, that's not on the test. But then I need to learn it, if I if I have one question. Yeah. Yeah, I was kinda confused as well, but yeah, that's good. Yeah, yeah. So, um, I need, I I was thinking we'd practice some of these, these, I don't actually have the answers, so, do I have the answers? Nope, but, uh, honestly, I I need to practice these to make sure I know what that I'm doing, so let's take a look at this for a second. It's a bunch of printf's, but it's a printf with the decimal and the justification and all that, right? Oh, um. I should assign, I should tell you what the number is. Um, what do we know? All all we know is that printf. Just type it, what do we do? But the handwriting, um, all we know is that printf. Do we know x, did it tell us x? Yeah, yeah, no, no, sorry, it, uh. It gave us all the values. Of all these things. I thought it would just just give us that print statement at the start, tell us what it is, those are the declarations. Okay, got a collage going here. So let's take a look at what this is. Yeah, there we go. So printf that plus a minus x, sorry, minus x minus four. So I'm assuming the plus a doesn't do anything, I mean, the plus doesn't do anything, what's a? A is negative five point oh, does plus a make it positive? I don't think so. No, that doesn't make sense, so I don't think it does that. Um, minus twenty minus four, so it's gonna be a a double expression, which is gonna be minus twenty nine point oh. Uh, okay, now, let's look at the justification, well, it's a long float, so it is gonna come out as a as a, um. Uh, double, so it's not gonna be that one, although it would never be that one. Let's see, so it's gonna be five total places and two after the decimal place, so. I'm quite certain that that's what that means. Five total places, one after the decimal place, the negative sign counts as a decimal, uh, as a place. Can anyone else chime in if that's right? I don't know if that's right, that's just what I I think is the right thing. Gives an error? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Uh, that's true. Try it, let's try it. Let's give it a try, so, uh, genie is here, uh, new C file. So. Um, I want to declare, what am I declaring? Just x and a, so, come on. X, uh, is an integer, int x equals twenty. Um, and I wanna declare a, uh, double. A equals negative zero point, uh, five point oh. Uh, yeah, compile. Let's see, I don't know, question four, and I I lost track, question four. Um, I declare those two, and then I wanna printf. So let's see if that plus does give an error. And it'd be nice if I can move back, I don't know why I can't. One note's a little annoying with how you can move back and forth, okay, printf. Now, that, so what's inside there? Percent five point two L F, oh, whoa, hold on, what's the dollar sign zero? I don't know what that means at all. I completely ignored that also when I did it, so. Um, so this is plus a minus x minus four. So let's see what happens, it finished successfully, so I get. Yeah, this. Oh, that's just text, that's just text after. Yeah. So. No, it says plus a in there, I I covered it with a green thing, it's it's plus a. Minus a would come up with a negative value. Yeah. Right, so yeah, so, yep. Yeah, it will, you're right. F, do I need to click build still or no? Oh, okay, so F nine F five is the what's gonna make it to make it go. Oh, okay, thank you, yes, that is very helpful. Um, okay, so yeah, this is the answer, that's good. Let's take a look at the next one here, um, this is percent three D. Okay, um, so, I'll just make it big like this. What's what's the number that's coming in? Int of int, so no, no, the above. Because multiplication does need, is is a binary operator, so. Is it? No, it's. Oh, so it's not multiplication? Yeah? I don't know either. Um, so, okay, let's say that this means pointer y, pointer p is the address of k. Uh, we don't know what the address of k is, at all. Oh, it's a pointer, so it's, yeah, so this is. Oh, and wait, hold on, hold on. This is pointer p, pointer p. We know that pointer p as a pointer. Goes to the address of k, uh, the address of k. So this is p as a pointer. So wouldn't it give the address of k? Okay, let me try it, let me try it. Not that I don't believe you, but I wanna see it. Um, this is, we know, uh, double. K equals two point five. We know double pointer p, there's no p declared before, yeah, equals the address of k, that's it. And then I wanna just print. Print. Yeah, let's see, uh, so I was just gonna put pointer p here. Oh, uh, F nine F five. So I get the value stored, and what if I just do p? P is. Uh, uh, as a, is it a, is it an integer? Oh. Yeah. I know, it still doesn't like it, L F expects argument. But we're trying to figure out what happens if there's no star in front of p, that's what we're trying, we're trying to do, if it, what is just a variable p? So I guess the variable p, if I just say, um, whatever, h equals five point six, if I just put h here, it's gonna work. Uh, still doesn't like it, oh, just because variable p. So just p is undeclared, pointer p is the only thing that exists here. So. Pointer p, what if I said pointer p was just k? No, that doesn't make sense. Okay, okay, that makes sense. So pointer p is to the address of k, so when I put pointer p here, it's putting the address of k here. Uh, it doesn't like, what does it not like? It doesn't. Just h being there. Uh, here, there's a d. Uh, it just doesn't, it gives me zero, but it still compiles successfully. What if I wanna see the address, though? What do I do if I wanna see the address? Uh, no, well. Compilation failed, why did compilation fail? Incompatible, double pointer p equals k. Oh, it was gonna be ampersand k actually, here, ampersand k, if I just wanna see the address. Do you pointer k in that case? I wanna, essentially what I'm saying is, how do I just see the address of k, is what I'm trying to figure out, how do I just see the address of k? So compilation failed, because it should, there's no point. So it do. Just the letter p or 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 pointer p? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It worked, yeah, it works, yeah, so that's the address, okay. So p holds the value of the address, pointer p. Point, what if I said L F here? Whoops, ran the wrong code. Okay. So. Wouldn't that then be the same as if I did no star there? Because then I'm saying that p is the same address. And then pointer p. I understand it's not gonna do it, but pointer p would give me the same thing, but it doesn't. Yeah. Oh. So, k. Yeah, yeah. So here isn't, here is, yeah, two point five is the box that contains, I I mean, k is the box that contains two point five. P is another address that contains pointer p? Oh. Yeah. Hi, yeah. Yes, I hear you now. Okay. Yes, let's take a look. I just wanna be convinced of what's happening here, let's see. Um, so. If you, p. Uh, where am I, what am I looking at? P equals the address. P is the address of x, pointer p points to the value of x, so if p, mhm. Uh huh. Okay, yeah, and and. What is it exactly that you you write? You write this line, and then pointer p equals. Well, you declare, okay, you declare this, okay, we'll figure it out, it's okay, so. Print f percent d p, just the letter p, that should give me the address of x, okay, the address of x, x is stored, x has value twenty two. So x is stored at this address, okay, that makes sense. P is the address of x, so it displays the address of x. Print f, um, percent. Think that's a d, I guess, that's a d, yeah, okay, and then, uh, percent d of pointer f, pointer p, I mean. So, okay, so it's as if pointer cancels the ampersand. So pointer p is just what's inside the box. Right, okay, and then if I wanted the address of p, p has its own address. Yeah, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Slightly different than the question here, which was where. Because I'm saying pointer p equals the address of k. So if I were to put another pointer around that, what's pointer pointer p? Pointer pointer p would be k. I think. Because to me, this. Yeah, wha- what exactly was the line of code that was that was written here? What exactly was was written for this in this one? Maybe if you ha- if you know it, what was written? Yeah, someone sent me this question, Maya, if if she has, exactly what was the code that was written for this question, like for this prompt, because I know this was written. Okay. Okay, don't worry, yeah, yeah, I see. Hmm. Go back to genie. Uh st- star, right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, no, star ki- star P is not a variable. Star, yeah. So what does? So essentially this is asking, star P is saying, whatever P is pointing at, what is the value of that? But P. Here, yeah, yeah. That makes sense. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So how does this relate to the question that we were saying? We were saying pointer P, so. Pointer P is the address of K. Oh yeah, the what I've my confusion was how is pointer P, how is how is printing this result in K? How's printing, how does printing this result in two point five? Well, printing that results in two point five because. Okay, 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 pointer. Okay, I guess 'cause there's, it feels like there's multiple things being said at the same time. P stores an address. Pointer P doesn't restore anything, but pointer P stores the actual variable uh value. That an address holds. So by saying pointer P equals ampersand K. I, to me, it feels like you're saying. You're saying two lines. You're you're, to me, this is the same thing as P equals ampersand K. Because in both cases, you're just saying that P should be the address. Uh that that sorry, that ampersand K should be the address that we're talking about. Okay, okay. Value that's he- stored at this address. Okay, okay, uh uh that that seems to make sense to me. Yeah. Okay, so then pointer P is gonna give me the value that's stored in X because it's pointing to. Sorry, not X, sorry. Pointer P is gonna give me the value stored in K because um pointer P is asking for the value that is stored at the address that it's pointing to. So it's gonna give me two point five, because that's the value at the address that it's pointing to. So two point five times Y, another weird thing, but times Y, 'cause it looks like another pointer. But I guess since there's just no pointer Y declared, so use times Y, so uh two point five times four. Um, okay, that'll be a double. That'll be ten point O, but we want an integer, which is fine, it's just ten. So it'll be one, it'll be s- this. It's typecasting, I think is the word, yeah. Well. Uh but. I will try it. Yeah, I will try it, let's see. So this was, what am I typing? So I did I already initialize this properly? Yep, and then printf, so. First of all, does this? No. Why not? Why does it give me nothing? Oh. Uh used by another process. There you go. And all I wanna change is I want this to, well, not all, but one thing I wanna change is this should be three times an integer. I mean, not not three times integer, but three and then integer. I'm gonna typecast this to be. I guess I'll leave the space, no space there, and Y. And let's see if that works. So compilation failed. I put a space, space doesn't matter. Oh, that's important. Uh Y is an integer. Or whatever, int Y equals four. Uh finished, and eight is the answer that I got. Y is eight, the answer that I got. Oh yeah, you're right. Wait, actually, no, hold on. Wait a second. The typecasting happens, what happens first? Does the typecasting happen first onto this and then it multiplies? Or does this happen first and then that whole thing is typecasted? Okay, so so essentially the order is this times Y. Okay, sure. Uh so then I should get this out of the answer. So that's an important note. Typecast. Typecasting uh uh happens before, before what? Happens before multiplication, that's all we know, but. That's all we learned there, but yeah, typecasting happens before multiplication. Okay. Yeah. I guess so. If I were to have this. Um, yeah, I would get, I would ju- get, oh, with the space at the start, yeah. Okay, makes sense. Um, let's try this next one. So printf percent minus four D. Five minus Z over S, so let's figure out what five minus Z over S is. Okay, so five minus Z over S, over S, not eight. Okay, so Z is uh one, an integer one, S is an integer three, so this is zero, so it's five. Uh because an integer divided by an integer is uh gonna be a, I mean. Is one over three is zero point three repeating, but the answer has to be an integer, so it rounds down to zero. So. So what does negative four here do though? Uh does that mean it's four places after the decimal? Oh, puts it behind. So five, space. Uh justification? Yeah, so it's that one. Yeah, I think it's that one. Is that good with everybody? Hope so, okay. Um, this next one. It's double B over C, so B is uh B is zer- uh eight point O. C is negative one point O, so it's already double, so that doesn't do anything, so we just get negative eight point O as a as a double. And it's gonna have five total places, two after the decimal. So it'll be negative. No, it'll be space. Space, negative eight point O O. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So it's just five places in total. So negative, we want five places in total, one, two, three, four, five. Two of them are after the decimal place, yes. And the number is eight, yes. Looks like it's that to me. Any comments? Yeah, it does. It does. I mean, I say that pretty confidently, but I do distinctly remember hearing that and thinking that's weird, but then it is how it worked, and the negative also cancels the space. Um, okay, then. Could be wrong, I guess. I do, I I'm not, I'd say I'm ninety percent certain about that. There are not answers for this. Exactly how we like it. Um, so last one we have here. This is just from some midterm that I have here. I could send you the midterm. Yeah, th- there's no, it's it's the twenty fifteen spring, CPS one twenty five, twenty fifteen spring. Okay, uh this is printf, so the justification is to the left, there's six places and one is after the decimal place. So again, pointer P is gonna give me uh a two point five. Pointer P is two point five. That is being multiplied by X, X is twenty. Okay. So that's gonna be uh fifty, right? Uh yeah, fifty, fifty point O. So it's. Oh yeah, you're right. You're right. Okay, let's say if there was an L here, let's say if there was a L F. If there was an L F there, what would what would happen? So the answer is none of them, 'cause there's no L F. If there was an L F. Well, our value is fifty point O. I want six places justified on the left, one after the decimal place, so it's gonna be point O. Fifty, one, two, three, four, five, six. Uh which would be that one. So yeah. Okay. So there's that, uh any questions about that? Uh it's a double, yeah, 'cause two point five times twenty. Okay, um I can do. There are other midterm questions. Best three variables greatest. Uh th- there's more programming questions. Should I do more programming questions or should I just? Uh, oh, here we go. Write a C program consisting of a user-defined function called midterm, which does the following. Midterm function. Okay, this looks like a good question, actually. This is a programming one, but it includes functions. Uh which is just gonna be the first time using a function. Um I should say I have CPS notes that are available, uh which I will put in the chat now. I just forgot to put them before. So in homework help, I will put my programming notes. There you go. They are up to date with everything on the test. So this is the program that we're gonna do. So write a s- write a C program consisting, oh, sorry, is it up to date with everything we're gonna do? Our functions on it? Just realized, did I not declare, did I not put functions? Um, no, no, I did put functions. Yes, I did, okay. So write a C program consisting of a user-defined function called midterm, which does the following, oh, it's nine o'clock, I just realized, this this is our last question, okay, and then that'll be it for saying. Um, so write a C program consisting of user of a user-defined function called midterm, which does the following. Midterm function should calculate the first, the sum of the first, why is so many typos in these? Sum of the first uh N natural numbers and also. Finds the the even and odd numbers in that range. I assume also based on the. What? Also based on the. Yeah, yeah, based on the, they give a two example results, so they really explained it poorly. Midterm function should calculate the sum of the first N natural numbers up to the input. Input, right, up to the input, and also finds that the even and odd numbers in that range. Midterm function should display the even and odd numbers. Main function should display the sum of the first N natural numbers in a in a file called program dot T X T, so we have to write to a file, I guess. Okay. Not too bad. So let's try it out. I will open a new C file. So. Okay. First things first, we need to declare a function, which is called um midterm function. I'll just call it midterm, I guess. What is it gonna return? It is gonna return. Um, it is going to return the sum of the first N natural numbers up to that point. So it's gonna return an integer. I'm gonna call it midterm. And I forget the syntax. I have to say in here, I have to put the this and then that, I think, and then here I have to say what is the input? The input is an int uh A, A and, I'll just say in input. I think I declared that right, so let's see if I did. So the what it's gonna do. Is it has to sum, put add together all the natural numbers up to and including N, I think, and including, yeah, and including uh N, which is the number we put in. Actually, you know what, I'll call it capital N, since they call it capital N in the thing. So. We do that, and then it also has to print out each number and say if it's even or odd. It also seems like it has to start at one. Uh that isn't said in the text, but both the examples start at one, so not bad. It's okay, so it's fine. Okay, so to do that, I'm going to do a for loop. Or a while loop would work too, but I'll do a for loop. So uh my index variable will be I, uh so um integer I equals zero, or may as well start at one. Um, while, so I want this fo- for loop to run such that I is less than or equal to capital N. Okay, and after each thing, we're gonna do I plus plus, and I realize that's supposed to be semicolons there. Okay, and I need my for loop to have a body. There you go. So for each I in there, what we're gonna do, I'm gonna have to declare a variable in here, which is gonna be an integer, and it's gonna be a sum. Right? So sum plus equals um I. Uh that's it. And then uh just to make a print statement, printf. Um. Uh well, okay, and I have to be an if statement, actually, 'cause I have to decide if it's even or odd, so if. Else. Okay, so what's happening here is that we're gonna we're gonna get an integer I, that's what we just added to the sum. And I have to then say uh I is an even or odd number. I is even, so one is uh odd, two is even, right? So I have to say if the number we're saying, we're talking about I, is divisible by two. Uh and and when you divide it by two, you get a remainder zero, so just be clear. Uh when you divide it by two, you get a remainder zero. That's what that's saying. If you take I divided by two, you get a remainder zero, then print this. Uh percent D is an even number. Right? And I'll just put a new line. New line is right there. And the percent D is just I. To get it. Which again, otherwise, we wanna print a different piece of text. Which is saying that the number is an odd number. And I. Uh looks right to me. We wanna return. Sum. And then in the main program, it said in the main program, we should say uh we should write it to a text file. Uh first, let's just see if it works, so I'm gonna say um uh midterm. Midterm of um five, I guess, I don't know, let's do four, cause four is in the text here, um and then print. F. New line, percent D, sum. And let's see if it works. Uh question five. So it doesn't like, what is it not like? Uh right here, thank you. Compilation. Oh, you're right, yeah, 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 so this is sum equals. You're right, uh and I'll say int sum. You're right, there you go, executed. So uh that. One is an odd number, two is an even number, three is an odd number, four is an even number, and my output is ten, yep. So instead of just printing it, I just need to write it to a file. So I'm gonna say out, or no, no, I'll say um. Yeah, sorry, did someone say something there? Okay. Uh out equals uh F open, so I'm gonna open a file, I'm gonna call the file. Program dot T X T. And I'm gonna open it in write mode. I think I opened that right, nothing, I don't know. Then I'm gonna print uh F, printf. Into that file, the file was called out. Um what am I gonna, what am I gonna print? I'm gonna print an integer. And that integer is gonna be some. And I think I can just run, even if the thing isn't there yet, and then it'll create the thing for me, it'll create the um. File. Uh what would it be called? Program, yeah, and there you go, ten isn't there. Good, so uh why not, let's just uh. Let's say um. I don't know, I should do it here. Uh scan, sca- uh. Wha-. Let me have a moment here, um while one. That. So I always want this to loop, just gonna ask, uh scan F. Percent percent, percent D. Um. Input, or in in, I'll just call it in, and I'm gonna just declare in. And I'm just gonna put in here. And it should just. Didn't like it. Yeah, on purpose, oh, but I wanted to ask me a, oh yeah. Oh, you're right. So uh if I put in five, it should give me that, if I put in seven, it should give me that, if I put in ten. What'd you say, sorry? Yeah, that's true, let's see if it's actually writing to it, nope, it's empty for some reason. Did I have it open? Put ten again. Is ten in there? Nope, ten is not in there. What if I delete the files? If I delete the file. It's open somehow. Just because that's open? 编译包, if I put in ten, now I look in program, nothing there, okay. If I close this, open program again, still nothing there, why is that the case? Is this not running now? Out. Oh, I didn't close it, I never close it, F close. What'd you say, sorry? Yeah. So ten. Two. Had just c- just crash it, I guess, I I don't know, was it right? No, it didn't write anything. Um, I should have a. Um. Um. By making this way too complicated, but I I just wanna, I just wanna see if I can actually get this to write, um. In uh it's not equal to, well, it's while in. It's fine. So if I put a zero in, it should exit the program, that's the point, that's all all I did there is, if I put a zero in, it should exit the program. So now. If I put in five. And I go into program, nothing there, if I delete the file. It can't delete, because I have that open, and I will do it again, actually, without um five, and I'll actually close it. It's fine, close the program. Run the program. I get a text file that opens, I put five in. And then I close the program. N hundred and fifty. Uh why, hold on. But. Yeah, so I put fifty. And then I closed the program. Do I get another thing in front there? Yeah, I got a fif- ooh, but why does the number? What? Why did, I got a fifty at the end, but also these numbers changed. Well, the function is just returning sum. And the sum plus equals I, oh, no, 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 I don't want a plus equals I, no, 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 I want a plus equals one. Yeah. Okay, now I want a plus equals one, and if I put in fifty and then close the program. I should have five hundred in there, okay, oh, cause I put zero, cause I put I I put a zero, so yeah, yeah, it's fine. I put. I put that at the start. Should work? No, no, that won't work, of course not, never mind. Um. Yeah, I can, yeah? Or try just closing the program, just closing it? Let me, let me make sure, what's in here right now? Nothing's in there for some reason, I don't know why nothing's in there, but nothing's in there right now. So if I put in fifty and then just close it. Still nothing in there. But if I put in fifty and then actually properly close the program. Five hundred is in there properly. Cause the the extra zero is cause I'm I'm setting zero to be leave. Right, so. I could edit that to make it not count, but okay, so learning there, that, you know, you do have to close the pro- close the file properly. Um and you actually have to make it leave the program, not just crash the program. So that's the answer, essentially, yeah? Yeah, don't make it infinite by accident, yeah. Exactly. Although if you wanna make an infinite loop, a while one is the way to do it. But yeah. Okay, so there's that, that's good, um anyways, I said that would be the last question for today, so that is the last question for today. Um but we will do more similar things tomorrow, just sort of doing questions, any questions that are suggested. Um playing around with code to try to make sure, you know, we understand things fully, um and things like that. So yeah, that's it, I'm here for a few more minutes, if anyone has any more questions, but if not, have a good night. Yes, I can, of this, this here? Of the code, okay. Have a good night. As here, the the function. So this, th- this is just declaring a function, right, this is, we're we're declaring, declaring the uh midterm function here. Here is still my int main void, it didn't say void, but int main uh. Still here, right, this is the, this is the 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 main program. It starts there, that first part is just declaring the function. Uh yeah, I th- this is like where all the code of what the function does and like declaring it as a thing happens before the main. It happens before the main, so first I have to say, well, what's the function, it's called midterm. Right, what type will it, what will it uh output? It'll output an integer. What will it take in? It'll take an integer and call that capital N. What will the function specifically do? What will it specifically return? And then I can do that for multiple functions after that. Do it again, so this is the main structure, though, of declaring a function, and then there's the main file, which is what's gonna run when you click run. Where you can call the function and all that. No problem. Okay, any more questions before I get going? Where did I what? Like before this, before this class, I did like, n- not at any place, but I just like I had learned uh Python and. G M L, which is a game maker language, which is essentially a s- very simplified version of C. Um so yeah. And I programmed two games, so that's, I guess, got a good practice there. Yeah. Yeah, sounds good, have a good night. Have a good night, have a good night, see ya. Okay, sounds like. I uh six thirty tomorrow, I'm pretty sure, yeah, six thirty tomorrow. Is what I'm doing. Okay. I am still recording, yes. But I cannot be recording.